Obviously, we're not going to make it.
Employee assistance for a while. This is a two-step program. You can get you out of this. You don't have to keep coming.
Yes. Yeah, thank you. And.
Look over your foot, straight up over your head.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Sembo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kuzick.
Present.
Mrs. Ferraro. Mr. Giovanni.
Present.
Mr. Heckman.
Present.
Mr. Lot.
Present.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Here.
All present except Mrs. Ferraro.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes of May 6?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Lot?
I'll second.
Ms. Zirinsky is second. Voice acclamation vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Uh-uh.
Thank you. Um, is there courtesy of the floor? Don't all jump up. There's no one. Seeing no one signing in, is there anyone from the floor who wishes to make a comment under courtesy of the floor? Seeing no takers, thank you. Mr. McClure, do you have a report this evening?
I do, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening.
At first, it's really my distinct honor to ask Principal Bailey to come up here with me. Because he is an incredible man who, in addition to being a wonderful principal, is working with us on our implicit bias training amongst other things in Northampton County and is a gentleman and a scholar and a tremendous athlete. But that's not why he's here tonight to come up here. Whereas, Principal Harrison Bailey of Liberty High School received the Pennsylvania Principals Association Secondary Principal of the Year Award. Whereas, this prestigious award recognizes the accomplishments and dedication of an outstanding middle-level or high school principal, both public and private school, who provides outstanding leadership for his or her students, staff, community, and peers. Only one principal was selected this year. Whereas, Principal Bailey came to Liberty High School nine years ago. And whereas, he was nominated by Mitchman Middle School Principal Peter Mays because of his ability to rise up and serve his school and community. Whereas, Principal Bailey is dedicated to helping his students overcome obstacles in their educational journey. And whereas, he helped launch the project LEAD, The Way Curriculum, allowing students to explore engineering and biomedical sciences before college. And whereas, three years ago, Principal Bailey plunged Liberty into becoming a trauma-informed high school, challenging his staff to rethink the way they approached their students and urging the district to provide more mental health resources. And whereas, out of all this work, he created the Liberty High School Mental Health Center, staffed by mental health professionals and featuring a peace room for struggling students to visit and decompress. Whereas, Principal Bailey cares deeply and genuinely for his students. He challenges tho- those around him to tackle issues preventing students from learning. Now, therefore, I, do I, Lamont G. McClure, Northampton County Executive, on behalf of the citizens of the county, recognize and congratulate Principal Harrison Bailey for receiving the Secondary Principal of the Year Award from the Pennsylvania Principals Association. Congratulations. We're, stay here, stay here. You know, we're so excited to do this and I don't just do this gratuitously. You know, Principal Bailey, as I've said before, is known to me in several capacities. But pretty soon, we're going to get our American Rescue Plan money. And one of the things I'm going, next week, by the way, is what I mean by pretty soon. And one of the things we're going to be proposing, and we're in the very initial stages of working with his boss, the superintendent, Dr. Roy, to really dig in to broadband in the Bethlehem Area School District. And we will, we will work with all of our school districts countywide, but we're really going to first dig in with the Bethlehem Area School District because, as I think I've said earlier, learning has probably changed forever and there are too many students in Northampton County who are underserved when it comes to having the necessary access to their internet. So, you know, I'm here giving him this acknowledgement because he deserves it, but also because I'm telling you, we're going to be focusing on this and maybe he could say a word or two about that, although I didn't tell him I'd ask him to do it.
First and foremost, thank you for this honor and inviting me here tonight. It's the first time I've ever been in this building, so.
Welcome.
Welcome.
But thank you, thank you. In addition to this award, I just want to say that our schools are, having gone through this pandemic for a year-plus now, we are headed into the most difficult year, I believe, that we will ever see in education. And that is on many fronts, from an academic standpoint, from an emotional standpoint. And the dedication of our government on the federal level, state level, and local level to support our schools is going to be more necessary than ever. So, I thank you for the work that you do, for the dedication you have to our schools and our children, because without that, we have no hope. And so, you truly do amazing work. In terms of the broadband access for our students in the valley, it is absolutely a need. We have so many families that do not have access. And without that access, there is no equity. There is no ability to engage in the ways that they certainly need to in order to see a positive future. So, whatever hand you have in that process, I thank you for it and I implore you to stay dedicated to that because it is certainly needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Oh.
No, I just wanted to say, you were my son's principal.
Oh.
And he affectionately referred to you as HB3. And he talked about you in such a way that you can tell that you made a real impact on his life.
Oh.
And I know he's not here today, but I want to extend my thank you to you because I think that you really do an excellent job with the students at Liberty and they are so lucky to have you there.
Oh, thank you, thank you so much for that. Thank you.
Mr. Myers, would you like to be acknowledged?
I just want to add something to it. We seem to know each other for a while, Mr. Bailey there.
Yes.
I'm quite proud of all the work you've done since you've taken over that job. I've known you when you were at Lafayette and we do things that folks don't know we do, but congratulations and you'll excel well beyond your years, my young friend.
Thank you, thank you. I wish I was still young, but.
I believe that was a relative statement. Thank you, congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to get our governing body in the background there, it makes for a neat. Thank you, sir. A little bit to talk about the American Rescue money that's coming, but working together, all of us with our citizens in Northampton County, we have Northampton County moving in the right track, on the right track, in the right direction. And as evidence of that, we don't have masks on tonight, those of us that are fully vaccinated. So, that is really exciting. And so, that's the first piece of my report to you is that we have changed the masking policies to be consistent with the CDC guidelines on county property. If you're fully vaccinated, as defined by the CDC, you do not need to wear a mask. If you are not fully vaccinated, you still need to wear a mask. The public, if they are fully vaccinated, are permitted onto county property without a mask on. If they are not fully vaccinated, they must wear a mask. So, that's where we are with that. You know, we're talking a lot about how we're moving forward in the right direction, on the right track. And I think we need to now keep the forward momentum going. So, we really worked on helping small businesses survive in the pandemic with our CARES Act funding. We really worked on filling a need when the state and federal government frankly let us down. You know, we formed testing collaborations with hospitals, with Easton Hospital, now with Coordinated Health. And we're going, we're working on expanding that collaboration with Coordinated Health to include vaccinations. This is all going to take American Rescue money. Giving more money in terms of grants to small businesses in Northampton County is going to take more American Rescue money. And my hope is, with the amount of money, which is over $62 million over two years, not only will we be able to finish the job of having a first round of grants for small businesses, but that we will have enough money to then have a second round of grants for small businesses who participated last year because of the hesitancy of their purchasing public to come back. People are not coming back to our small businesses in droves. They're coming back, but it's going to take time. We're at, I think, 50% vaccination Commonwealth-wide today. I think when we get to 70, 75, people will start feeling better. But in the meantime, our small businesses are still going to need more support. And if we want to stay on the right track, if we want to keep moving forward in the right direction, we're going to need to make these investments with our American Rescue money. Finally, we're talking about broadband. So, we've begun initial discussions with the Bethlehem Area School District and with the Eastern Area School District. But again, let's understand, we're going to work with all of our school districts who want to work with us in terms of broadband to begin bringing equitable, as the principal said, equitable access, because learning has changed forever. And, you know, these kids don't, many of these kids don't have the necessary access to the internet that they need to do their schoolwork. And although education is not a core county function, let me repeat that, education is not a core county function, it's not now, probably never will be in Pennsylvania. But if money is coming through us to support things like broadband, we can do that. We can serve as a partner who has some money to help them do their projects. So, this forward momentum that we have going now, we need to sustain it. And the good news about that is we're about to have the money to do that. We're about to have the money to do that. And so, that is something that is very exciting to me and I think at our next meeting, you'll probably have to accept that money.
Are there any questions for Mr. McClure? Mr. Heckman?
Thank you. I just want to say, I applaud the efforts that you folks did last year. Now that we're finally sitting here without masks on, I think that it's a compliment to everyone who, nobody put their head in the sand. I mean, when this hit us, I don't need to really tell you, it was hit hard at the county level. We didn't get a lot of direction really from anybody. And I know I've had somebody say, well, you got all this CARES Act money. Yeah, but it depends on how you handle it and what you do with it. So, I think we had reasoned discussion, debate, and you moved forward with actions, with the testing and what happened that I think were innovative. And given the situation that we were all in, I just want to say that I think your administration handled it with a great deal of competence. You know, so I just wanted to say that. Now that we, we may or may not be rolling out, and I listened to Dr. Fauci about probably a booster shot down the road, which I'm fine with, but I think that the county is moving in the right direction. And a lot of that has to do with the policies that were put through for the past year. So, I just want to say that.
Yeah, we are, we are. We have this moving in the right direction. I think it's important that we stop and remember all those citizens who we lost to coronavirus in the last about year and a half. I think it's important that we never forget. As we're talking confidently and with hope about moving forward in the future, we never forget about those folks that we lost. And I know you don't either, Mr. Heckman. Yeah, look, to reflect on your point, we were attached to three of the world's hotspots to New York City, which was one of the world's hotspots for coronavirus by virtue of commuting, right? Folks go to work. We obviously share a border with New Jersey, which was one of the world's hotspots for coronavirus and we're also part of the greater Philadelphia region. So, we really got hit hard. Our two great hospital systems did a tremendous job. The health bureaus did a great job, but the county really filled a vacuum. And we did this because you worked with us and all of our citizens worked together. We formed those testing collaborations. We were early adopters in being aggressive at getting PPE. When a lot of people were struggling to have PPP, our nursing home, the largest one under one roof, had the PPE it needed. And it had it right away and that's because you supported us right from the very beginning. And Todd Weaver and Jennifer Stewart King did a really great job finding it and getting it and stockpiling it. And they really did a fantastic job and I can't praise them enough for that. And we got so much PPE, we were able to help our municipalities with PPE when no one could get it, when no one could get it. So, you're right, we were really aggressive.
Well, and just from my.
And trying to crush the pandemic.
If I may, Madam President, I've been around a long time, the county, and people remind me of that now and then. But the thing is, honestly, we never had a situation, since it's a global pandemic, it hit 100 years ago, this was probably one of, this was the biggest crisis to hit our county that I can remember, when there was no script for it. So, that's what I meant by, I also, I think it was handled well because oftentimes, we're handed things by the state or the federal government and say, you got to go this direction or that direction. And we figure out how to do it. But not only did we figure out how to do it, we had to figure out the script as well at the county level. And we did have to get into areas where maybe normally we wouldn't. And we did, and I think we handled it well. We kept the proper restraint and at the same time, took the initiatives that needed to be taken. So, that's why I just wanted to say, because I had a lot of people talking to me about this whole pandemic and the county's response to it and what we've done or didn't do. And I just wanted to go on the record saluting your team.
And I think one of the things that I think people forget, and it's because County Council has been so supportive throughout this process, we didn't need to keep our emergency powers in place. We could conduct our attempts to crush the pandemic together, coming into public, being as transparent as possible, talking about what we're doing, talking about what we are and are not spending the money on. And that's a credit to County Council.
I have a question for clarification and then a comment. You mentioned about the masking policy in all county buildings. However, Greysdale does double as, I guess I'm asking, that is considered more health, medical slash facility?
Greysdale and the prison are exempted from the new CDC guidelines. They have their own rules, they are following their own rules, and both have kept their masking rules in place.
I thought so, thank you. And I also want to say, there's this little thing that happened Tuesday called an election, which you didn't speak about, but I wanted to thank you and the administration for, again, conducting a nice, fair, well-run election. It's very nice to not hear complaints from people. It's very nice to have our results out in a timely way and not be one of the places that everybody's waiting for things. So, thank you again for doing a good job.
Well, yeah, and I apologize for not mentioning it. I guess it's, I guess it's good that we, you know, it wasn't the first thing on our agenda item tonight. A credit goes to our elections office, it goes to the judges of elections and all the poll workers and all the volunteers that helped bring this thing together. The credit really goes to them. The important thing for us, I think, after our experience in 2019, is to put on fair, legal, and accurate elections. And with all the misinformation and conspiracy theories that are out there and being sold, I think what you're going to see is Northampton County really goes above and beyond when it comes to following the letter of the law, even when the letter of the law is not terribly clear, even when the Department of State punts on giving important guidance. The, Northampton County does its best with its solicitor, Ricky Santi, who's a tremendous lawyer, to read the statutes, read the case law, and try and guide the Elections Division, the Elections Commission, our judges of elections, on how to properly conduct an election. And I think most folks, when they look back at how we've conducted our election, whether it was for people on Election Day, we had our 156 precincts, our 315 XL. So, if you're a person who wants to vote in person, you could go out there and use a machine. There were very few problems with them. There were one or two, but very few, mostly minor. And so, that went very well. The mail-in balloting went very well. I think what we'll find in retrospect with the mail-in balloting is we are following the law. We are following Act 77. And the reason we're doing that, literally, is to give people confidence about the security and the safety of the mail-in ballots. Because, again, there's so much misinformation and conspiracy theories being spewed out there, meant to undermine the democratization of elections, that we're doing that, we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
Yes, Mr. Myers?
Mr. McClure, the Sears spot in Northampton County crossings, are you responsible for that setup of the, where the shots are being, vaccines are given?
The what?
At the Sears building.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
At the crossings.
No, that's not us.
It's not us?
Nope.
Okay. Because that is open and there's no waiting list.
Not unless they didn't tell me about it, that's not us. I'm pretty sure they would have told me.
But that's wide open and it's open to the pub, anybody can come in and out at no time. I didn't know if you had anything to, if that's something.
That's great. You should, every time you hear of a place that has them, because, you know, we, anyone who can't get a vaccination out, they could, should call us and we'll help them find one. They're ubiquitous.
We should make sure that's out there.
Yep.
Anybody else? Going once, twice?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, under Old Business, we have a public hearing on the ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending the 2021 Northampton County Budget, Department of Community and Economic Development, Administration Fiscal Affairs, Balancing the Budget, Information Services, Department of Administration, Act 12, 911 Interconnectivity Emergency Management, Hazmat, Act 165, Tax Force Equipment, Department of Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Department of Human Services, Homeless Assistance, Children, Youth, and Families Development Fund, Area Agency on Aging, Health Choices, Mental Health, Developmental Programs, Early Intervention, Drug and Alcohol. Myself and Mr. McGee introduced this ordinance at the May 6, 2021 meeting. Are there any questions or comments regarding this from the public? Seeing none and hearing none, are there any questions or discussion here from council? We did review this yesterday at the Finance Committee, but is there anything left over? Okay, Ms. Sembo, please call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Topped by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Is there any old business to discuss? Seeing and hearing none, we'll enter new business. Tonight, we have the introduction of the ordinance titled, An Ordinance Amending, Northampton County Ordinance Number 141-1988, also known as the Northampton County Real Estate Rules and Regulations Ordinance. I need someone to please sponsor. So, Ms. Zirinsky.
Second.
And Mr. Myers. The public hearing and debate and possible vote will be held on the June 3 meeting. We have considerations this evening of appointments and reappointments, first for the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board, the Lehigh and Northampton Transportation Authority, and the Personnel Commission. Mr. Heckman, will you introduce the resolution?
Certainly. Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointments, reappointments, as indicated hereafter. Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board, appointment, Maria Antonia Bariga Mittman, Easton, PA, term to expire 6/30/23. Lehigh and Northampton Transportation Authority, reappointment, Kimberly A. Schaefer, Bethlehem, PA, term to expire 3/2/26. Personnel Commission, Kristy Gesner, Easton, PA, Matthew G. Mutterelli, Bethlehem, PA, Lisa Youngkin-Rex, Easton, PA, terms to expire 12/31/21. That's the resolution. So.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on any of these appointments? There is none, let's have a vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Topped by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have a consideration of an approval of memorandum of understanding with the United Steel, Paper, and Forestry Rubber Manufacturing Energy Allied Industrial and Service Workers International Union Local 2599. Mr. Heckman, please introduce the resolution.
Okay. Whereas, on April 30, 2021, County Council received the memorandum of understanding between Northampton County and the United Steel, Paper, and Forestry Rubber Manufacturing Energy Allied Industrial and Service Workers International Union Local 2599 regarding a sign-on bonus for nursing employees at Greysdale as Attachment A. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the memorandum of understanding shall be approved on this 20th day.
Signing bonus. And I think there's other issues that need to be addressed here as well. I think, you know, one of them is retaining existing staff. I think that that's part of it, the issue here. The other one is addressing the FMLA, IFMLA, and what happens at the 3 o'clock shift. So, that continues to be an issue and reducing mandation. So, again, I think a bonus is proper, but I don't think this is adequate. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, since I introduced it, and I, Mr. Kuzick has made that point, I would just say that I think many of us agree that that might be the case, but this is what was negotiated with the union and they approved it. And I'm going to vote for it since it was between the administration and the union. Having said that, I think, again, I can speak from some experience here, Greysdale has always been something that we've had to keep moving with. And at different times in its history, like any nursing home, private or public, we've had to look at all those factors on an ongoing basis. So, I think that going forward, certainly, we're going to have to continue to see what needs to be done, if we need another bonus, if we need to look at a salary structure. Council does set salaries. I think that's important to remember up here. So, I mean, I think there's many places we can look and things we can do going forward. But as of today, this was handled by the union and the administration, and they both, parties agreed to it, so I'm ready to say yes to it for today.
Thank you. Mr. Myers, then Mr. Lot and Mr. McGee.
I want to echo what Ron had to say, but also, as a person who spent the last seven months running, inning out of nursing homes, this is a business that is hurting. Everybody's throwing money in that direction, trying to get help. So, we're not the lone wolf here. It's a crisis that is typically attacking our nursing homes and we need to understand that we're going to be in a fight with everybody because everybody's throwing money. Some are throwing more, you know, at this point right now. It's a move in the right direction and I think it's something that we're just going to have to take a look at in the future.
I just think it's worth stating publicly, this is a three-month program. And like we talked about in committee meeting, we can certainly revisit this if it's effective, if it can be more effective. This is a very short-term trial. I'm certainly going to, you know, I love all the things that the administration's been doing to try to get more employees into our Greysdale. And I think this is well worth an effort. I like the short timeline, get a taste of it, see how it works. If it works well, we can see why, if it doesn't work well, see what we can do to make it work better. So, I will be supporting it and I think it's worth to say, this is something new we're trying. It drives me nuts when people try new things and, ah, you know, they tamp it down, but then you get accused of not trying new things. So, I'm certainly going to support this. Hopefully, it works for you.
Yep. I agree with, I will support this tonight. And this became an idea from the staff at Greysdale, one of many ideas, out-of-the-box thinking. staff at Greysdale, one of many ideas, out-of-the-box thinking. And I also agree that it should be revisited in a short period to possibly increase it. I know the need for nursing is incredibly high. So I just want to make the comment that it came from, the staff brought the idea to us. And so they kind of own this. And I think it was a great idea for on airport. Thank you.
Yeah. So I just want to add that I definitely will be supporting this as well because I do think it's important to understand that this was negotiated with the union. This is what they asked for. But to talk to Mr. Kuzic's point about retaining existing staff and MFLA and IMFLA and reducing mandation, this is not an issue that's isolated with only nursing homes or even at Greysdale. This is a problem everywhere with nurses. You can see, there's a billboard on 22 now that says that you can get a nursing degree in one year. Yeah. So this is not something that is just a problem with Greysdale or because it's mismanaged or for any other reason. This is a problem in the state of Pennsylvania. We need more nurses. We need more skilled nurses. And we need to make sure that we properly compensate our frontline workers and we treat them like the heroes that they are, not just give them a sign in front of their building or pat them on the back or buy them pizza. So $500 is not a lot. I understand that, but it is a start. And if we can agree to this, hopefully, we can make strides and make sure that our nurses are properly compensated as well. I'm all for that. Thank you.
Mr. Giovanni, do you have anything you want to say since everybody else got to go?
I look, I'm all for it.
Just want to, don't want to exclude you, sir.
No, no problem.
Okay. Since everyone said their piece, let's have the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
No.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to one.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of a donation to the Northampton County Area Agency on Aging. Mr. McGee, will you introduce this resolution?
Absolutely. Whereas, Northampton County Home Charter Section 20210 provides that county council shall have, among other, the following powers: to accept on behalf of the county any gifts of real property and to provide for the acceptance by any agency on behalf of the county of other gifts. And whereas the family of Ms. Bonnie Bloomingdale has designated donation in her memory to be directed to the Northampton County Area Agency on Aging, now therefore be it resolved by Northampton County Council that it does hereby authorize the county executive to accept on behalf of the family of Ms. Bonnie Bloomingdale donations in her memory to the Northampton County Area Agency on Aging. So moved.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? And let's call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have the consideration of approval of a health and safety resolution for refinancing of bonds by the Lehigh-Northampton Airport Authority. Mr. McGee, will you also introduce this?
Absolutely. Now therefore be it resolved by Northampton County Council of the County of Northampton that, number one, it is hereby declared to be desirable for the public safety and welfare of the people in the area served by the facilities comprising the project, including, without limitation, the county and Lehigh County, to have such facilities financed through the authority, and the authority is hereby authorized to finance the project. Number two, the issuance of the bond to finance the project and related costs and expenses of the financing is hereby approved. It being understood, however, that such approval does not and shall not directly or indirectly obligate the taxing power of the county or otherwise obligate the county in any way whatsoever, and is given for the sole purpose of complying with applicable provisions of law relating to the finance of the project by the authority. Number three, the issuance of the bond to finance the project is hereby approved pursuant to Section 147F of the Code of Promulgated Thereunder. Number four, the proper officers and other personnel of the county are hereby authorized and empowered to take all such further actions and execute such additions, documents, as they may deem appropriate to carry out the purpose of this resolution. Number five, all prior resolutions are part of prior resolutions of the county, not in accordance with the resolution, with this resolution, are hereby repealed insofar as they conflict herein with. Number six, the resolution is effective immediately. So moved.
Thank you. Any discussions? Let's call for the vote.
One comment. The Airport Authority was in yesterday during the committee meeting and gave us a nice, a nice understanding of this undertaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Embo?
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay. We have next, the consideration of Open Space Initiative and Livable Landscape Grant Projects Resolutions.
Wow.
I'm going to call them one at a time. Ms. Sarinski is going to introduce all these resolutions. So the first is Dimmick Park Improvements Phase III, Heller Town Borough.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Borough of Heller Town grant application for the Dimmick Park Improvements Phase III project. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator, the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program, or his designee, is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $212,500 of Open Space Initiative OSI municipal park funds as the Northampton County contribution to the Dimmick Park Improvements Phase III project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by the county council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated. So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have North Catasqua Park Improvements, North Catasqua Borough.
Right. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Borough of North Catasqua grant application for the North Catasqua Park Improvements Project. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator, the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program, or his designee, is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $13,609 of Open Space Initiative OSI municipal park funds as the Northampton County contribution to the North Catasqua Park Improvements Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by the county council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated. So moved.
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
A friend of mine lives in North Catasqua, and he said, "I hope you folks in Easton remember that we're part of the county." And I just wanted him, if he's watching, to understand that, yes, you are part of the county and you're getting some money. So I don't know. I told him to watch, but he's an Hondry Dutchman, so he probably isn't. But he is getting his money.
And he just heard you say that. That was lovely to call your friend that. Can we call for the vote, please?
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Keep your friends close, Ron.
Oh, yeah. They find me. They find me.
The Hausnich Memorial Park Phase III Improvements in Bethlehem Township?
Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Bethlehem Township grant application for the Hausnich Memorial Park Phase III Improvements Project. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator, the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program, or his designee, is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $200,000 of the Open Space Initiative OSI municipal park funds as the Northampton County contribution to the Hausnich Memorial Park Phase III Improvements Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by county council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated. So moved.
Discussion? Vote.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the Highlands Preserve Master Site Plan and Development Bushkill Township.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Bushkill Township grant application for the Highlands Preserve Master Site Plan and Development Project. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator, the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program, or his designee, is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete the Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $12,500 of Open Space Initiative OSI municipal park funds as the Northampton County contribution to the Highlands Preserve Master Site Plan and Development Project. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator, the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program, or his designee, is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete the Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $12,500 of Open Space Initiative OSI municipal park funds as the Northampton County contribution to the Highlands Preserve Master Site Plan and Development Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by the county council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it is allocated. So moved.
Thank you. Discussion? Vote.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have the Socken Creek Greenway Corridor, Heller Town Borough.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Borough of Heller Town grant application for the Socken Creek Greenway Corridor Plan Project. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator, the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program, or his designee, is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $40,000 of livable landscape funds as the Northampton County contribution to the Socken Creek Greenway Corridor Plan. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by the county council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated. So moved.
I do have a question. The pending DCNR grant, is there a timeline on that? Or is there a pending date on that? And I apologize for being late for the previous meeting.
I believe they put it in application, which was in April. We normally find out sometime late fall if they get it.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Call for the vote.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have Hans Meadow Park Development Phase I Lower Nazareth Township.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Lower Nazareth Township grant application for the Hans Meadow Park Development Phase I project. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator, the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program, or his designee, is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations to this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $47,118.37 of Open Space Initiative OSI municipal park funds as the Northampton County contribution to the Hans Meadow Park Development Phase I project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by county council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated. So moved.
Comments? Questions? Vote.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have the Sockin Creek Greenway Corridor, Heller Town Borough.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Borough of Heller Town grant application for the Sockin Creek Greenway Corridor Plan Project. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program or his designee is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $40,000 of livable landscape funds as the Northampton County contribution to the Sockin Creek Greenway Corridor Plan. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by the county council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated. So moved.
I do have a question. The pending DCNR grant, is there a timeline on that, or is there a pending date on that? And I apologize for being late for the previous meeting.
I believe they put it in application, which was in April. We normally find out sometime late fall if they get it.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Call for the vote.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have the West Ward Pocket Parks Enhancement Project, the City of Easton.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the City of Easton grant application for the West Ward Pocket Parks Enhancement Project. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program or his designee is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $50,000 of Open Space Initiative OSI Municipal Park Funds as the Northampton County contribution to the West Ward Pocket Parks Enhancement Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by county council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated. So moved.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just a comment. I happened to go around and check a couple of these places out today, and boy, they could use what we're going to do. And it's nice that we're doing this, and they are pocket parks where a lady can sit there with her baby and enjoy the day. This is beautiful. I'm 100% behind this. Thank you for the West Ward and for us giving them the money.
Or thank you to us for giving them the money.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Lot.
I just think it's worth saying, like we said several times, we had presentations, long presentations on all of these, and they were very good projects, and they showed us at our committee meetings. Like everything we do, we cover all this work in a committee meeting, and sometimes when people are watching it on wherever they watch it on, it seems like we blow through these things, and we don't. We spend hours going over them in committee meetings. Thank you.
Yes, we literally spend an hour and a half going over all of this, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just a comment, and if they would like to watch the committee meeting, it is available on YouTube.
Just a little commercial there for all you viewers out there?
This is starting to sound like a game show.
They miss a lot because it is covered in committee meetings, so.
Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have Polk Valley Park Trail Rehabilitation, Lower Sockin Township.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Lower Sockin Township grant application for the Polk Valley Park Trail Rehabilitation Project. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program or his designee is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $96,200 of livable landscape funds as the Northampton County contribution to the Polk Valley Park Trail Rehabilitation Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by the county council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated. So moved. I'm going to be saying that in my sleep tonight.
Comments? Question? Let's vote.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Last, on this list, we have Little Bushkill Stream Restoration Plainfield Township.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Plainfield Township grant application for the Little Bushkill Stream Restoration Project. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program or his designee is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $100,000 of livable landscape funds as the Northampton County contribution to the Little Bushkill Stream Restoration Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by the county council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated. So moved.
You're starting to sound like those commercials, what the end, when they do all the things on like Madison. Never mind.
You know what, though? I just want to make it clear that we have just, after, let's just say we approve this one hypothetically, right? Because we haven't done it yet. We will have approved a total of grants and matching funds for $996,927.38. That is amazing, and that is a testament, I must say, to Brian Cope and everybody in the parks, recreation, and open space. Thank you so much. This is amazing work that you do.
Yes, I want to say that when we were done, thank you for your fidelity to this. It's great to see so many of these, and it's really spread out all across the county, and it's lovely, and I hope that more people will step up and ask for this.
Yeah.
But thank you for you and your staff for what you do. Anybody else?
Kudos. Good job.
Good job.
Okay, let's vote.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
A lot of parks. Next, we have the consideration of approving a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for construction of Phase One of the Gaul Farm and Plainfield Trail Master Site Resolution. Ms. Sarinski?
Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Gaul Farm Preserve Phase One Development Grant Application to the PADCED. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Program and his or her designee is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligation to this project. Two, further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Northampton County Division of Parks and Recreation or his or her designee is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Three, the authorized official resolution may be signed on behalf of the applicant by the official who, at the time of signing, has the title of Superintendent of Parks and Recreation.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of an agreement between Northampton County Department of Public Works and Twin Rivers Tubing LLC Resolution. I believe the principals are here this evening for questions. Ms. Sarinski?
Sure. Would you like me to introduce it?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. Now therefore be it hereby ordained and enacted by the Northampton County Council that the proposed commercial use agreement with Twin Rivers Tubing LLC is acceptable. And I believe we have two people here today. We did discuss this extensively in the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee meeting, but I think Mr. Kuzick has questions.
Yes, as a matter of fact, yes, I do. And this is a resolution that's before us, number one. And at the last paragraph you just said, it says ordained and enacted. So I'm wondering how that phraseology is listed there. And then my understanding is lease agreements should be done by ordinance. So I'm just maybe asking our solicitor a question as to what the reasoning was behind this. I mean, I don't have a problem with it generally, but I'm just wondering why we have a resolution that is then saying that it's ordained. That, to me, doesn't...
Right.
Resolutions resolve. Ordinance is ordain and enact. So that's one issue. And the other one is, if in fact this is a lease agreement...
As soon as...
My understanding is it should be enacted by ordinance.
So once Mr. Spadoni figures out that we need to amend it one way or the other, we'll do that.
Do you want?
Does anyone have any questions regarding the actual project while we're waiting?
No, I was just going to say, if it's going to take a bit, you could always jump to the next one, and then maybe you'll have time to...
Can we...
This is just to float down the river, correct?
Yeah. Let's move on to the next one while he's pondering this, and we'll get back to that.
We will ponder.
Oh, he's done pondering. Well, you could sit anywhere if you want.
He's done.
That was a good ponder. Thank you.
It should be noted in Section 602...
Mike, sorry. That's how often I talk. It should be noted in Section 602 entitled ordinance is echoing the Commissioner's concerns. I think he's correct. It says that acts required the county council shall adopt an ordinance for any act which, and it says in Number Six, purchases, conveys, leases, or authorize the purchase, conveyance, or lease of any real property in the county. We need an ordinance.
An ordinance, yeah. So how... We can't just resolve this. We need to introduce an ordinance.
We have a procedure, correct?
Yes.
You will not be able to do it tonight.
You cannot vote on it tonight. That's unfortunate.
So then we have to follow the regular, we're going to have to wait to introduce it, and then a public meeting. I can say this, and I don't know about Mr. Kuzick. I read this, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, certainly it should be done the correct way, because if we don't do it the correct way, you've got something that if somebody challenged, you'd have a problem. But I just wanted to say, just because we can't do it tonight, I don't know, I'm not speaking out of school to say, however this is put forward for us, I support what the county wants to do with you.
So procedurally, can we amend this?
Can I just wait? Can I wait? Can I ask my solicitor? Can we amend this to make this an ordinance, or we need to wait, rewrite the whole thing and pull it on and put it on?
You need to rewrite it, and you need to introduce it. You need to have a public hearing and a vote.
All right, so then it's...
So the purpose of this resolution is authorization for us to go ahead and begin the process of negotiating and finalizing the lease. Because there's language that we'll need to have in the lease that doesn't currently exist anywhere in writing. So obviously, once we've concluded that, we'll take all the necessary and proper procedures under the charter to have that approved. So there's no lease before you to approve what we're looking for, and so they have some certainty, a certain level of certainty, is councils overall. A resolution is your resolve to do something moving forward, and they will have that and then be able to move forward on what they're going to do.
So if I understand this, this was intended to be a resolution to authorize an agreement and negotiation. This is not the lease itself.
It is not.
So we have to authorize the creation of that permission.
Yes.
To gain the lease. So that's what this should be. So my question is then, why can we not say, instead of now therefore be it hereby ordained, why cannot we change that language there to say, here be it resolved by Northampton County Council, that we authorize the negotiation and potential lease agreement? Or some version thereof?
You can use your resolution language to conclude the document that you have in front of you.
Right.
I'm being advised that our solicitor has made a statement, and he's advising us to have an ordinance, and so...
But this is not the lease agreement.
Our solicitor has given an opinion on this. Would you restate your opinion, sir?
You can disregard my opinion. No. Yeah. Or a lease, you need ordinance.
Please speak in the mic.
But there is no lease. There is no lease.
There was an Exhibit A.
There's no lease.
There is...
I didn't sign anything. There's no lease.
But it references it in the where.
And there are still provisions to be ironed out before I would then bring that document back to you for approval.
Mr. McGee.
I just would like to point out the fact that I'm hearing the county executive say there's no lease. In a similar situation with maybe a similar, different company, a lot of times, is there not, I mean, to come up with a lease, is there any back and forth prior to the ordinance? Is there, in another different situation?
Yep.
With the administration, talk to somebody, pull somebody, and apparently you pulled them in, you talked, right? So there's, so they're really just looking for permission to come to some kind of terms to present to council. That's what we have in front of us.
That's correct.
Right, and it's my understanding that it's because this is commercial use, that's why we have to authorize it as an elected body. Not because this is a lease agreement, but because we have to authorize the commercial use so that they can create the lease with that commercial use language.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr., excuse me. Mr. Heckman, you're recognized.
Oh, I mean, with all due respect to the executive, that's where he's coming from. I mean, I don't know, but I believe past practice, you don't really need our permission to put together a lease that you would present to us and then...
No, but this is certainly novel, at least as far as my experience in county government goes. And before we would bring that kind of document to the governing body, we wanted to get a sense of what county council's view of this type of project is. I mean, I've heard the reflection in the committee meeting, I sat here and I listened to what you had to say and the questions you asked, and I think I have a pretty good sense that I could go ahead and then get a final agreement with them and then bring it back. But what we were looking for was your general resolve that this was a project worthy of moving forward.
I'm being advised by our solicitor that there's, the term proposed lease is in the resolution. If it would be as simple as Mr. Kusick suggested to change that, if those, that language wasn't in here, that was impossible. But it's stated it's more than just amending those three words. This is, it states that this is a lease agreement, and so I'm going to stand by what our solicitor says. He is our solicitor.
I hear you.
He is the one that sets and gives us advice.
May I just say something quickly?
Mr. Kusick.
I'd like to make a motion to table this at this time.
Motion to table? Do I have a second?
This is a time-sensitive situation, if I'm not mistaken. I'm reading here that they want to operate...
There's a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second then.
Second to table.
I don't care. There's no discussion on the table.
There's no discussion on the table?
You have a vote.
It's gotta get ironed out.
Thank you.
Call for a vote?
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
No.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
No.
Mr. McGee.
No.
Passes by a vote of five to three.
Okay, it's tabled. Tabling this does not mean that we don't wish to work with you. It does not mean that we're not in favor of it. Clearly, you heard what happened, and it's a language issue, and we will result, work to resolve that for our next council meeting.
As quickly as possible.
Yes. Thank you.
After all those yeses, okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Oh, sure, thank you for hearing. Guys are so nice and knowledgeable. All get along so well.
Thank you.
That was funny.
We're gonna move on to our next item of business. Consideration of Administrative Code Article 13 Contract Resolutions. First is the Abacus Corporation. Mr. McGee, will you introduce the resolution?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendations of the county executive as set forth in the attached documents to approve a contract with Abacus Corporation. This was discussed at the Finance Committee meeting yesterday, and there was some questions and answering. So moved.
Okay, any discussion? Questions?
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. Mr. McGee.
Now therefore be it resolved by Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendations of the county executive as set forth in the attached documents to approve a contract with CCAP. This was discussed yesterday in the Finance Committee meeting. This was our incumbent insurance carrier, and we recommend, we're voting on that tonight.
Any discussion?
So moved.
Let's vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the Fairfield Laundry Machinery.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendations of the county executive as set forth in the attached documents to approve a contract with Fairfield Laundry Machinery. This was discussed yesterday at the Financial Committee.
You have a question?
I asked yesterday, and I didn't, did we get a correction? Is there gonna be a lag time with this? Because we're dealing with folks at Raisdell's Clothing and Laundry, correct?
Correct. This project would not have any impact on the operations of the laundry.
It's gonna happen while you do it at the same time.
The work would be conducted starting in the afternoon, late into the evening, once the laundry staff has already concluded their operations for the day. So it would have no impact on their day-to-day business.
And that answers my question, that you were gonna give me an answer. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have Flyway Excavating, Inc.
Now therefore be it resolved that Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendations of the county executive as set forth in the attached documents to approve a contract with Flyway Excavation Incorporated. Motion moved. Our mo, moved. So moved.
Any discussion? Vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman. Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have Johnson, Mierman, and Thompson, Inc.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendations of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Johnson, Mierman, and Thompson Incorporated. So moved.
And discussion?
This is for work done at the Mincy Lake Park Recreational Rehab Project. Design and engineering.
Vote? Call for the vote?
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, and last, we have the Nylee Bridge Corporation. Mr. Myers, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Now therefore be resolved that Northampton County Council does hereby concur with recommendations by the county executive as set forth in the attached document to approve a contract with Nylee Bridge, which Mr. Kusick very happy. It's in his backyard.
Any discussion?
John, are you satisfied with the way it's written up?
Yes, I am. And just, if I could add, if you could notify the township as soon as possible, I think they'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
I was gonna ask if there's new business to discuss, but Ms. Sarinski presented something to me prior to the meeting that I think we should bring up, and I do have a question about how is best to do it before I ask to present it. It's the Penn State.
I just wanna make sure that everybody got a copy of it. I think those folks down at that end didn't, so if you could... No, I put it on your desk, so I don't think I got around that.
Yeah, I don't think you...
Listen, no one wants to forget about you guys, okay? We love you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ms. Sarinski approached me prior to the meeting that Penn State Ag needed a letter of support for their state budget to ask to increase the budget, and I just wanted to make sure that if it was just to be done in a letter, was the appropriate method? Or did we have to do a resolution? Because there's some time sensitivity on this, correct?
Sure, sure. Our solicitor recommended that we do it this way.
There were, if I may.
Yes, sir.
There were discussions in that regard that you could sign it in your individual capacity, and I spoke with the Commissioner about that and hence drafted this correspondence. You may or may not sign it if you'd like.
Right. In a resolution, it would come from the elected body, but this is our individual signatures. And I think the reason why, the reasoning behind that was because if you didn't want to sign it, you don't have to, but because of the time sensitivity, those who wanted to sign it could endorse this letter to increase the funding for Penn State Ag. And I just want to say that this came out of a meeting that I attended with Penn State Ag, Council 10. Their request was that they're, they have not had an increase in appropriations from the state since 2010. They're requesting $3.3 million. What Penn State Ag does is they're part of the hemp program, they're part of 4H. They also are very instrumental in everything that has to do with the spotted lantern fly, and I think we know how important that is and that education is. And so I did feel compelled to endorse this letter, and if anybody else on the council feels so compelled, I would encourage you to sign onto the letter, and we will send it out to each and every one of our legislators in Northampton County. So that would require several letters and several signatures, right?
Can't we have one master slide that go to window? Can't we just all sign at the same one?
And send copies up?
And send copies to all of our legislators? Sure. Yeah?
What's, what, how much time are we looking at? Because it's not in here.
Well, they usually start to formulate their budgets like right around this time, and so that's why this is time-sensitive. And if we waited to, I only got this information this week, so trying to get a resolution put on in this very short window would have been difficult. So, and to wait another month might have made it too late. So I want to make sure that Penn State Ag has their needs met and that we support our Penn State Agricultural Extension. So this was the only way to do it, basically. Does that make sense?
You had a question, Ms. Embra?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
We have the letter before us. Are you getting the signatures tonight so we can send it out tomorrow because everyone's here?
I'm ready to do that.
Okay. Just wanna clarify.
So if you want to sign it, sign tonight before you would just...
Pass it around.
Take one down, pass it around, right?
Do we have a nice copy with letterhead, or we're just gonna print it over?
I'll sign it. I don't, I, I don't think we'll get very far with it.
Thank you, Mr. Heckman. And that letter's gonna be available real soon. It's gonna be on fancy letterhead. It's gonna be great. Thank you.
Did you have a comment? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Heckman, new business?
Yes, I have new business. I was thinking of putting forth a motion. As you know, yesterday, not yesterday, I try still coming down from this election thing. On Tuesday, the voters decided that we will be called commissioners, you know, and that's the will of the voters. So as I thought about it, and I was talking to some people, I realized, since we're in the middle of an election, a big county election this year, I think it would behoove us. We know what the people want now, and they've made it clear, but we do not have to implement anything at, at this time immediately. I think we have the ability, because I know what happened when people wanted farmland, where then you had to come up with a mechanism to fund the farmland, if I'm not mistaken. I would like to make a motion that we hold until January 1st, 2022, and in the meantime, we consult with our staff and our solicitor on what methods, procedures would be best to make these turnover to county commissioners, even though we have had, we've been given the permission by the voters to do it. But I do think we should take that time to look through all the ramifications of it so that we do it in the most cost-effective manner, that we get it right, that the parties involved and that we deal with, understand. The staff probably will have concerns. Our solicitor may be able to give us some recommendations. So my motion is that we, while accepting the will of the voters, that we hold off on the official naming of this body as a Board of Commissioners, which is another thing from council to board commissioners, until January, January whatever, the first meeting, or the second meeting, January...
Organization meeting?
Twenty... Yes, by all means.
Need to have the proper protocol and procedure to implement the vote on Tuesday. And I think that's a marvelous idea that'll give us time to have the protocol, the procedure, and do it the right way, as opposed to rushing it.
Thank you. It's a long time since somebody said I had a marvelous idea. But yeah, I, I just, I think that, you know, this is something that's a big deal, and it's going to, for us, I mean, you've been calling us commissioner tonight, which I noted, but I think for people, even for us and the staff, it's gonna take some time. We just can't click a switch.
So you have a motion and a second?
Yes.
If I, if you would... Could I just add on to his motion that it should be January 3rd, 2022?
January 3rd, 2022.
Is that the reorg meeting?
That's the reorg meeting, right?
First Monday, that's not a holiday, in the new year.
That's, that's it. It's on the floor.
Sounds awesome. Do I have just, wait. Discussion? Wait, 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 wait.
She has to read it back to us.
Right now, she's in the middle.
I think she's getting the letter worked out.
Okay, brief her while she's going.
Do we need to restate the motion, or should we just open discussion?
No, I think she needs to read it. I don't know. Uh... Come on. No, wait, hold it. Linda's gonna read. I'll change it.
To accept the will of the voters, but to hold off until January 3rd, 2022.
January 3rd. We amended it when you were...
Okay. To switch over from commissioners.
Well, to allow, to allow for time for council staff and its counsel, council solicitor to work out proper procedures.
To implement the vote.
We have Tara the 2nd, and any discussion from council members? Mr.?
Just a question for our solicitor. I don't know what the legal term is, but is this ripe, or do we have to wait until the vote is certified in order to implement Mr. Heckman's motion?
The Home Rule, if I may, I'm sorry, I'm plugging, I'll turn again. If I may, the Home Rule Charter permits any councilperson to introduce a resolution at a council meeting, recognizing that it is not certified. I think the resolution can move forward tonight, and if there's some reason that it is not certified, then we will take further action, but I think it's appropriate for tonight.
Any other discussion? Mr. McGee?
Maybe we could put in a resolution, you know, that is upon certification.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's...
Upon certification, we would...
There you go.
That way, if it doesn't get certified, then you don't have any more homework to
Excuse me, Mr. Myers?
He's ruminating on mountains. I think we're okay, right?
Any further discussion on the matter at hand in this room at this time?
Well, just amend your motion to include the wording.
All right. I'm amending my motion that I introduced to add the words upon certification of the vote. And everything else that was there.
Tara still seconded that amendment to the amendment to the motion.
We have to have two votes now.
I know, I'm trying to pull this out. Going once, discussion. Going twice. Let's have a vote on the motion.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Let me think about it. No, yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Passed by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much. Is there any other new business?
No, that's...
Oh, did I? Was that just on the amendment?
He accepted your wording of his motion.
Are we done with that now?
Any other new business? No other new business. Any council committee reports?
Yes. We did capital improvement yesterday, and everything we discussed was passed tonight, and unless Mike has something on the agenda in the future, we don't have anything planned. At some point, July, I plan on bringing in courts and corrections.
Any other council committee reports? Mr. Heckman?
Personnel committee met yesterday, the fruits of which you voted on tonight. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. McGee?
Oh, yeah. Finance committee met yesterday. All the contracts on finance that were approved tonight, we discussed in great detail. We also had some presentations from some of the vendors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Ms. Sarinski?
Yeah, we had the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee meeting today. We reviewed several open space initiative projects that we approved tonight, and we also reviewed several livable landscapes, funding awards totaling our $996,927.38 in contributions and match. We also had Deion Campbell, our new Director of the Conservation Districts, come in, and we will, we discussed the resolution regarding House Bill 139 and Senate Bill 28, and we will further discuss that and possibly initiate a resolution in the future. We also updated everybody on the Carstgeology Advisory Council. Nate Pritchard was in. He discussed how we will have a DEP hearing on June 2nd from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. via Zoom if you would like to participate in that hearing.
if you would like to participate in that hearing. And this is on the permit of the deepening for Boozie Unisum. This is really important. You should contact Colleen Connolly, the community coordinator, and for the DEP and register. He also indicated that at our Carstgeology Advisory Council meeting, we had the Fish and Game come in, and they will eventually give a presentation at the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee. And yeah, obviously, we talked extensively about the Twin Rivers tubing, but it was exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council committee reports? I believe we have a fully signed letter.
That's awesome.
We had to find room after Sarinski took up two lines.
Yeah, I know.
Do we have any council liaison reports for this evening? Tara?
Yeah, I was at, I just talked about this with the letter. Thank you, everybody, for signing it. It was at Penn State Agricultural Extension. They talked about their initiatives to, with the spotted lantern fly and industrial hemp and also, I don't know, and their education and how they're going to be getting, they've been very successful this year going back into the field. The other liaison, and that's actually it for this week, except for the Carstgeology. I already talked about that, so that's cool.
I'll come down the aisle. Mr. Myers, do you have any?
Nope.
Mr. Lot?
Yes, Lehigh Valley Economic Development Corp. had their board meeting. To keep it very brief, they had their outside audit done for the year. That came back clean. They hired a firm, and I don't have my notes with me, to do a study of the strengths and weaknesses of our economy in the Lehigh Valley. They did that several years ago. They're looking at doing it again. They've been, we got involved in a questionnaire for a couple hour, or an hour with them. And last but not least, they announced that unfortunately, it's in our neighboring county, but they are, we are down to the last two on a very large pharmaceutical company coming into the Lehigh Valley. It started out as like a, I don't know what they said, 30 city search or something, and we're down to the final two. It's us and the state is somewhere down in Delaware, and we all know what Delaware does very well. So it's going to be difficult, but it'd be a huge pharmaceutical if we would win. If we are down to the last two, we will know in June if we have it. This will be substantially good-paying jobs. It would be a campus setting, very large project out in Lehigh County. So maybe, Lehigh County, it's in our neighboring county, but it's, I thought it was worth talking about, meaning it's a very large project, and it's the Lehigh Valley they're looking at.